Okay, I'm sure we are on YouTube. Good morning, Ms. Gonzalez, how are you? Uh-oh, you're on mute. Good morning, Ms. Gonzalez, how are you? I don't show that you're on mute, but I can't hear.
You're on mute.
But I'm getting an echo.
That's me.
Oh, okay.
That echo was me because I had the YouTube stream.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
I can, yes. Good morning.
You know, how long have I been using Zoom? I don't know. It's different for different setups.
Yeah.
And I forget to change it, sorry.
No problem. And I do have the real time up, Ms. Gonzalez.
Oh, okay, good.
No issues with that link.
The issues are usually with the reporter.
Oh, yeah.
Then you get loopers.
I think we're expecting this to probably be around two hours.
That's what I was guessing.
Yeah. If it, I, I was planning on taking a, a break around, um, like eleven, eleven fifteen, unless it looks like we're just about to finish.
Sure.
So. Jocelyn, the new office is perfectly fine for hearings. The only thing is I think the walls are a little thin. At one point, I think, heard somebody singing this morning. Hopefully that will not, uh, be, be an issue during the hearing.
Well, I think it'll be okay.
Yeah.
I have to remember to put my dog away. He's sitting next to me right now, looking so content, and I feel so sad.
I'm sure he's fine.
No, he's not.
He has a right to be there, same as us.
God forbid the garbage man comes by, the whole hearing's gonna go off the rails. Yeah, I do have to come in and get, um, I don't know what happened to the wire that connects that podcast mic, um. And Ms. Gonzalez, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you just fine, yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, because we've got those nice new microphones, but I can't find the wire that connects it, um. I'm, I must not have moved it when I moved my office, so I have to go in and get another one, um, because I had everything else, but.
Well, thank you for saving me from my app panic this morning. It would just help if I read all the notes all the time.
Oh, I had seen that you signed in at eight forty, and I thought, oh, she's gonna be sitting there wondering where we are. Uh, no, well, we had, we just changed the time last. And it was through a separate order, so I figured you might not.
And Christina even noted it in the usual place, and I just, but I was looking up at the old order, so I'm like, that's okay.
Makes perfect sense.
I'd rather be an hour early than an hour late, any day.
That is for sure.
Absolutely, yeah, okay, let's see. All right, I'm gonna sign off for, or turn off my video for one second to go take care of my dog, right back.
Oh, and Ms. Gonzalez, I assume you know who the attorneys will be today for the parties?
Yeah, Anna, before she left, gave me, um, I mean, unless it was updated, this I got along, I got this on August twenty first, so.
Oh, okay, good, okay.
Yeah, yeah, she took care of all that stuff, she was.
Okay, that's good. Now, Jocelyn, am I a co-host? I don't know that I necessarily have to be. I just figured I'd ask, just because I don't see any, like, a waiting list or anything. Or a waiting room, I should say.
You are not yet, but I'm gonna make you one, because it's always better to have two of us, I think, than not. Remember how to do that. Do you remember how to do that, John?
I think, um.
I thought it was under host tools.
I thought it was, if you go to, like, my video or whatever, and then click the three little button, the three little, the blue thing with the three little buttons. And I think it says can make co-host, if you click on that little button, I think, but I, I don't know that for sure.
I got you, right there. All right.
Perfect.
Oh, you know, I'll handle everything in the waiting room and stuff, um.
Oh, okay.
Just to have that as a backup in case I miss.
That sounds good. Yeah, I see Mr. Herman and Mr. Well, I see Mr. Herman, Ms. Lang, Mr. Tolleson. I don't know who zero nine one zero one is. We probably can let him in whenever.
Maybe one of Mr. Herman's clients.
Yeah, could be.
Okay.
Could be Ms. Perry.
I'll let everybody in at nine fifty-five.
Okay. Seems reasonable.
Do you guys know who will be presenting the case if it's, if it's Mr. Herman in this winter, or if it's the other firm listed?
It'll be Mr. Herman.
Oh, okay.
Um, he'll be True Connect, and then, um, Ms. Lang will be staff.
We don't expect uh, Ms. Mercer, Mr. Nimsik, Nimsik?
Uh, no, off the top of my head, I'm not even sure who those people are.
On my list, oh.
Yeah, the only attorneys that I've seen make an appearance in this case, um, have been Mr. Herman and then, uh, Ms. Lang. But we'll check on that before, um, before we go on the record, just to verify.
I'll change that right now.
Yeah, uh. Can you say those names again?
I have Deborah Mercer, Michael Nimsik, Keith Herman, and Nan Winter. But I might have this, oh, this is from August, so.
Yeah, I'm wondering, you know.
Well, Nan Winter, I know, is at the same firm as Keith, um, but I don't know about those other two.
I think Anna always lists whoever could show up.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean?
There were, yeah, there were two more attorneys that signed, uh, the initial, trying to find it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Uh, Nathan Johnson, Dan Lopez, no, actually, that was just Ms. Perry and Mr. Johnson. Oh, well, well, I don't think we're expecting them, but if they show up, we'll deal with it, I guess. All right, I'm gonna let everybody in.
Sounds good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You hear me okay?
Can.
Yes.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Herman.
Good morning. Am I coming in loud and clear?
Yep.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Herman, do you by any chance know who zero nine one zero one is?
I believe that is Deborah Mercer. She is outside legal counsel. Um, I, I did forward the invite to several True Connect reps, um, namely Ms. Mercer, uh, and Mr. Alex Raiser, um. Just, uh, just because when watching on YouTube, there's sometimes a delay.
Hi, yes, um, good morning, it, it is Deborah Mercer, um, I, as, um, Mr. Herman mentioned, I'm, I'm just listening, I'm not participating, so I'll probably just turn off my camera.
That was one question we were just discussing with Ms. Gonzalez just now, Mr. Herman, is who all would be speaking for True Connect, and I didn't want to speak for you, but I suggested that it would just be you, but.
It's correct. It, it'll be me and our witness, Danielle Perry, who I haven't seen join yet.
Okay. Sounds good. And Ms. Lang, I assume you will be the only attorney for staff.
That is correct.
Thank you. Well, we have a few more minutes, so we'll give it a couple more minutes before we get started, and I think, uh, we're still waiting for Ms. Perry, Mr. Herman, unless she's with you.
I, I haven't seen her yet, so.
We've got time.
Are you all in the new building yet?
We are, I'm there now. It's interesting. It's not bad. The walls are a little thin. I heard somebody singing this morning. I'm not really sure who that was, but I'm assuming that will not happen during the hearing, so.
That would be an interesting transcript.
That, that would be, that would be. I can't say I would be thrilled, uh, but, uh, if you hear singing today, no, it's not me, so.
I'm still not seeing Ms. Perry.
Oh, I think, I think she just joined us. I think I just saw her name pop across, and I hit accept or admit.
Oh, did you? Oh, oh, okay. I looked away for a second.
And I think the only name I don't recognize right now, uh, Alex Raiser, are you with True Connect?
Yeah, sorry everyone, Alex Raiser with True Connect.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I had mentioned he would also just be monitoring. The only, the only people speaking for True Connect today will be Ms. Perry and, uh, myself.
Okay, no problem. Well, um, Hearing Examiner Barrett, I think we have everybody that we need. Should we go ahead and get started?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, any matters that we need to address, uh, before we go on the record today? Okay, seeing none from either party, um, so then, Ms. Gonzalez, whenever you're ready, we'll go ahead and go on the record.
Ready.
Okay, uh, good morning, the time is now ten AM, uh, we are now on the record, and this matter before the New Mexico Public Regulation Commission will please come to order. Uh, this is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of the petition of True Connect Communications for Designation as an Eligible Telecommunications Carrier, New Mexico. This case has been docketed as case number two five dash zero 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 three one. My name is John Cryncamp. I'm joined this morning by Jocelyn Barrett. The two of us are the hearing examiners with the PRC. Will be presiding over this hearing today and subsequently providing the commission a recommended decision. This hearing today is being transcribed by a court reporter. For the sake of that record, I'd like to go ahead and start with entries of appearance from the parties, starting with True Connect.
Good morning, Mr. Exa, Mr. Examiner and Madam Examiner. Uh, Keith Herman, on behalf of True Connect Communications Incorporated, uh, also present with me today is our one witness, Ms. Danielle Perry. And also present in the hearing room is outside counsel, Ms. Deborah Mercer and Mr. Alex Raiser, but they will not be speaking today.
Okay, good morning to all of you and, uh, Telecommunications Bureau staff.
Good morning, Hearing Examiners and, uh, Mr. Herman and, um, True Connect reps, uh, Candy Lang, on behalf of New Mexico Public Regulations Commission Utility, uh, Division Staff, uh, particularly the Telecommunications Bureau. With me, I have Mr. Brady Tolson, who will be our sole testified witness today. We also have Mr. Tosin Olof, uh, Olo Fincau and Eugene Evans, um, from the Telecommunications Bureau, but they will not be, um, they will not be, uh, they'll just be observing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and again, good morning to all of you. Um, I guess with respect to the mechanics of the hearing this morning, this is pretty straightforward. We only have two witnesses. Um, we'll begin obviously with Ms. Perry from Two Connect, um, and then, uh, we will finish with, uh, Mr. Tolleson from Staff. Um, I think my anticipation is we will finish, um, certainly before lunch today, uh, if it gets to about eleven fifteen or so. Um, and it looks like we are not imminently about to adjourn, then I will go ahead and take a brief ten-minute recess. Um, uh, if for some reason the hearing takes longer than expected, we end up going into the lunch hour, we can discuss whether to take a lunch break at that time. Uh, but again, right now, I don't think that's gonna be necessary. Um, any questions or concerns about anything I've outlined, any questions at all about the conduct of the hearing today? Okay, and I assume everybody was able to access the documents in Dropbox without difficulty, so the witnesses should have those in hand. Okay, again, hearing no questions about that. Uh, so, um, are there any preliminary matters that we need to discuss before we start with the evidentiary portion of the hearing? Okay, again, seeing none. With that, Mr. Herman, you can call your, uh, first, and I believe only witness.
Thank you, Mr. Examiner. True Connect calls Ms. Danielle Perry.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Gonzalez, at your leisure, if you could, please swear in the witness.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, Ms. Perry. Can you hear me okay?
Good morning, I can't. I'm dialed in on my cell phone because it wasn't working well on the computer, so.
Okay.
Yes, I hear you.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, as, as you know, this is a, a transcribed proceeding, so um, one thing that won't get picked up is nodding in, in answer to a question, so please say yes or no, when, when you're answering in affirmative or negative, do you understand that?
Okay.
Uh, can you please identify your, your name, title, and place of employment?
Yes, my name's Danielle Perry. I'm the Chief Compliance Officer with True Connect Communications.
And are you the same Danielle Perry who prepared the testimony in this case?
Yes, I am.
Can you please identify what's been labeled True Connect Exhibit One?
True Connect Exhibit One is our application for ETC designation in the state of New Mexico.
Was that prepared by you or under your direction?
Yes, it was.
Uh, do you have any corrections you'd like to make to that exhibit at this time?
No, I don't.
Um, at this time, Mr. Examiner, I move to admit True Connect Exhibit One, our application in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Ms. Lang, any objection?
No objection.
Okay, uh, hearing no objection, uh, True Connect Exhibit One is admitted into the record.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Perry, do you have in front of you what has been labeled True Connect Exhibit Two?
I do.
Can you please identify that?
True Connect Exhibit Two is my testimony, um, the same as Exhibit One, with small changes to one zip code that was excluded um, on behalf, uh, on the request of a tribal, um, tribal community, uh, in the area, and then it also updated the ETC designations that we've since received in the states of Idaho, Kansas, and Ohio, as well as updating the denial of our petition in Pennsylvania.
Okay, I was going to get to those right now. So regarding the removal of the Mescalero Apache, is that reflected in what's been labeled Corrected Exhibit DP as in Danielle Perry dash five?
Yes, it is.
And that's on page two of five, uh, in redline format?
That's correct.
As well as page three of five?
Correct.
And regarding, um, Corrected Exhibit DP ten, does that reflect the changes you were discussing regarding True Connect's ETC certification?
Yes, it does.
And that is also done in redline format on page one of two in Exhibit DP ten?
That is correct.
Thank you. With those corrections, if I asked you these questions today, would your answers remain the same?
Yes, they would.
And that testimony is prepared by you or under your direction?
That is correct.
With that, I move to admit Exhibit, or True Connect Exhibit Two.
Thank you. Ms. Lang, any objection?
No objection.
Thank you. True Connect Exhibit Two is admitted into the record.
And lastly, Ms. Perry, could you please identify what's been labeled True Connect Exhibit Three?
Yes, it's my rebuttal testimony, um, to staff test, my rebuttal to staff testimony.
And, and it was prepared by you or under your direction?
That is correct.
And you don't have any corrections to note on this today?
No, I do not.
And if I asked you these questions today, would your answers remain true and correct? Or, excuse me, would your answers remain the same?
They would.
Thank you. With that, I will move to admit True Connect Exhibit Three.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Ms. Lang, any objection?
No objection.
Thank you. True Connect Exhibit Three is admitted into the record.
That concludes my direct examination. I will tender Ms. Perry for cross-examination.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herman. Uh, Ms. Lang, you have any questions for Ms. Perry?
Staff has no cross, uh, exact questions for Ms. Perry, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that brings us to the hearing examiners. Um, and Ms. Perry, I just have a few questions for you, mostly in the realm of, uh, just clarifying your testimony. Um, let me just direct you, I guess, to start, um, on page two of your direct testimony, um, to page, uh, so that's uh, Exhibit Two, page two. Um, and uh, I'm hoping that you can provide just a little bit of clarif, clarification about, I guess, the relationship between True Connect and then your affiliate Sage Telecom. Um, what I understand is that these are, from your testimony, is that these are separate companies. Um, they're affiliated, but they are separate, uh, but Sage Telecom does business under the name of True Connect. Is that correct?
That is correct. Sage Telecom was an acquisition that was made several years ago, and as we moved into various states, the council that we had at the time was filing for ETC designation using the Sage name rather than the True Connect name. And for the last, probably eighteen months, I've been working on a project within the company to have True Connect ETC designation in each state so that we can clean that up.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Now, you provided as an, as, uh, an attachment to your um, to your direct, this is, so again, True Connect Exhibit Two, this is your Exhibit DP dash four. Um, and I, do you have that in front of you?
I have Exhibit Two in front of me. I don't have the Exhibit, uh, Four. But I can likely speak to it if you'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, well, I was just curious about it, because, um, so essentially, what, what I see is Exhibit DP dash four. Um, so it's one page, and it, um, uh, has, I, I think it has four corporate entities listed on it, so it has TSC Acquisition Corporation. Um, then underneath that, it has Sage Telecom Incorporated, and then True Connect Communications Incorporated. And then under both of those, there's a company called Sage Telecom Communications LLC, DBA True Connect. Um, and so, I guess my question was, and I was hoping you could help me understand, so it looks like there's two different Sage Telecoms listed on this exhibit, is that correct, or am I just reading it wrong?
There should be just one, and perhaps it's a mistake on the org chart, but TSC is the parent company that owns True Connect and Sage as well. Over the years, there have been a couple of DBAs, um, so it's possible, oh, thank you, Keith, that's super helpful. Yeah, um, right, so, oh, I see how, what they've done. Okay, so T, TSC Acquisition is the parent company, like we've established. Sage Telecom is one company, True Connect Communications is another company, but we do also have Sage Telecom Communications listed as a DBA for True Connect in some states.
Okay, but it's not, so essentially, there's three corporations that we're talking about. There's TSC, True Connect, and then Sage.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Thank you. Uh, now, one of the questions, one of the other questions I had just about this corporate arrangement, um, do Sage Telecom and True Connect, do they have the same staff, or are they different staff?
We have the same staff.
Okay, so do you, so you work for Sage Telecom as well?
Correct.
Okay. All right, let's hope for. And I think, at least for now, Mr. Herman, I think that's all the questions I have about DP four. Um, let's see, okay, so, um, one other clarification question, um, I guess just about, um, True Connect's operations. Um, so you talk about, this is on page three of your direct, talk about how you're authorized to do business in New Mexico, um, by the New Mexico Secretary of State. Obviously, you're not yet, um, designated as an ETC. Do you have any business operations other than that, um, in New Mexico at present, or are you waiting until you get designated?
We're waiting until we get designated. We may have a small number of prepaid lines, um, in the state of New Mexico, because we do offer prepaid service there. And we did offer ACP when it was available, and a lot of the ACP customers did transition to our prepaid product. So it's possible that we do have a small amount of subscribers in the state of New Mexico.
Okay. All right. Um, so let me then ask you, um, moving into more, I can think of the substance, let me ask you on page twenty-one of your direct testimony. um, you talk about how True Connect's lifeline offerings compare favorably with those of other competitive ETCs. Um, this is one of the questions that, um, is tied into the public interest inquiry, uh, that the commission looks to. Um, can you, I guess, just give me a little bit more context for that statement? Um, so how does your offering of unlimited voice minutes, uh, and text messages compare to um, others in New Mexico? And then how about your data allotment as well?
Okay, that's a great question. So most other providers in the state of New Mexico provide the minimum service standard that's required by the FCC, which is a thousand voice minutes and texts. So we provide unlimited voice and text to our consumers. We also provide international calling at no charge to our consumers, whereas, um, competitors do not. As a data offering, we provide the, um, four and a half gigabits of data to, um, regular lifeline consumers, and then we provide ten gigabits of data to the, um, tribal subscribers. And the ten gigabits of data to the tribal is larger than most, um, competitors in New Mexico.
Okay, okay. Um, and then, I guess, for your regular lifeline customers, you said four and a half gigabytes of data, is that, um, is that, is that similar to what, um, your competitors would be offering?
It is similar to what our competitors would be providing. We also offer, um, top-ups. Um, that's what we call it. We wait if you run out of data and you need to buy more. Our, um, prices for top-ups are very competitive. Typically lower in most markets than you would see other providers.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's helpful. Um,
Oh, there's one other thing. I, I, I'm not sure if it's in here somewhere, but there's another, um, another service that we provide that is, makes us a little different than other providers. We have our own, um, app for the consumer to manage their services. And if you have that app, you're able to do things to earn, um, true rewards. And when you earn true rewards, you can then use those rewards to purchase more data as needed. And the things that you do, like, on the consumer's birthday, we give them true rewards. If they use their service, um, every, you know, once every two weeks, we give them true rewards. There are several different things that they can do. They can watch a video when they power on their phone um, from an advertiser to earn rewards. So there are other ways, um, that the consumer can get more data if they need, and that is definitely a differentiator from our competition.
Okay, thank you. Um, and now, another question that I had for you, and this, I think, sort of relates to the, to the remaining, I guess, dispute between um, True Connect and staff. Um, if you go to page twenty-six of your direct testimony, um, you talk a little bit about True Connect's experience serving tribal communities in other states. Um, and so you talk about, um, uh, in particular, you talk about Oklahoma and Washington. Um, can you describe, I guess, those, um, uh, those tribal areas that you currently serve out of New Mexico, and I guess how they would compare, um, I guess, in terms of, um, demographics to, you know, what you're expecting to see here in New Mexico?
Absolutely. Um, so we are very established in the tribal communities of Oklahoma, Washington, and most recently Alaska. Oklahoma would be the state where we've had the longest, um, relationship established, and probably the most comparable to New Mexico. Uh, when we move into a state, when we get designation, we typically have outreach to the tribal partners to find out how we can work with them to enroll consumers. And we use that, um, that template in Oklahoma, which we were successful, we've used that then in, um, Washington, and been very successful in the state of Washington within the last year of growing our tribal base. The same applies for Alaska. When we received ETC designation in Alaska, we went up to, you know, meet with the different tribal authorities to find out what we could do. We sent a team of in-person enrollment representatives to the area, and they've been very successful in establishing the relationships with, um, some of the different tribes up there and just the outreach. Um, I know staff has a concern that we don't have a plan in place. And while I appreciate that concern and would love to be able to say, well, here's exactly what we're gonna do, until we have designation and we go and we actually meet with the tribes, we, we don't have that. But we have definitely demonstrated in three other states that we do have the ability to serve the tribal area, and we do have a plan for establishing those relationships.
Okay, now, um, I guess one of the other questions that I have, just based on that experience that in Washington, Oklahoma, and Alaska, um, have you advertised, um, using native languages? Or, um, have you, have your advertisements primarily been in English and Spanish? What's, i- if you know, what, um, what type of advertising have you done in the past?
We primarily advertise in English and Spanish. We haven't, we haven't come across the need, where a tribal area has said, hey, in this area, we really need this. If we, if that happened, then we would adjust accordingly. But we haven't run into that as an issue thus far.
Okay. Yeah, that was, that was one of the questions that I, that I, um, that I had for you, um, about your rebuttal testimony. This is on page seven of your rebuttal testimony. Um, there was a statement, um, you know, you, you, you give an answer on pages six and seven about whether you'd be willing, whether True Connect would be willing to prepare advertisements in Dene um, for Navajo Nation, and, um, and I, I took, I, I thought your answer was, was helpful there. I, I was sort of struck by that last sentence where you said, if the commission determines doing so would help preserve Dene language and culture, we would be happy to do so. And I guess that sort of struck me because, um, I'm not sure that that's really the question that we have before us, right? I mean, the, 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 it's not so much about preserving Dene language and culture as much as it is about sort of effectively advertising, um, and, and, um, you know, reaching those customers. Um, do I, I understand, I think, from the context of your answer, that essentially what you're saying is that if you would be granted, um, you know, approved, uh, you know, to, to offer tribal lifeline, um, on Navajo Nation, then you essentially would assess whether or not advertising in Dene or other native languages would be helpful. Is that a fair way to describe your?
That's completely fair, and so that last statement may be a little off, but the, the intent there is that we're willing to work with, whether it's the PUC or the tribal nations themselves, to determine what the area needs. And obviously, we're going to meet the needs of the community. If we don't, we're not going to be successful, and we're in business to be successful. So we'll obviously, um, you know, have open ears to hear what we need to do to help those communities.
Okay, um, and I'm guessing you may not know the answer to this question, but do you know whether or not existing ETCs on, um, i- in Navajo Nation, whether they do advertise in Dene? I know that SBI is designated out there. Do you know if they advertise in Dene or just English and Spanish?
I, in the, um, research that I've done, I have not seen anybody advertising in any language other than English and Spanish, but that doesn't mean it's not out there, so.
Okay, no, that's fair. All right. Let's see what else. Um, yeah, one of the questions that I had, um, if you look at, this is going back to your direct, if you look at page twenty-seven, um, again, just clarification, um, you talk a little bit about this previous case that, um, Sage Telecom went through in New Mexico. That was case number nineteen dash zero zero three seven three dash UT. Um, and he talked a little bit about the burden of the proceeding exceeded what it had expected to incur, it being, um, Sage Telecom. Um, can you expand a little bit on that, just to provide clarity? Um, I don't think that, I wasn't here for that, and, and I don't believe, hearing examiner Barrett, so, well, here for that either.
Sure, um, and just for the record, neither was I. I've, I've been with True Connect for almost nine years. However, at that time, my capacity was the Chief Information Officer, so more of a technical, um, employee. But, um, my understanding, because I did get pulled into it a little bit to answer questions or provide support as needed, but my understanding was that there was just a lot of back and forth, and I'm not sure if it was with staff or intervenors. I believe it was with intervenors. And, um, the council that we had at the time, I, I, I don't, I, I, I wasn't involved. So my understanding is just that we were getting nowhere, and we were spending a lot of time and a lot of resources to try to move forward, and every time we would take, take a step forward, it seemed like we were pushed back two steps. Um, at the time, we did not have a Chief Compliance Officer, so it was the owners of the company that were really, you know, focused on trying to get this done. Um, I, I mean, that's really all I can say. I think it was also right around the time of COVID as well, where we were, you know, struggling with staffing resources. As you know, our headquarters are in Los Angeles, California, and that was an area that was hit very hard with COVID. So we were struggling with staffing at the time, and as well, um, we had the emergency broadband program launching, and we needed to focus efforts on getting that launched. So I think it was just kind of a perfect storm of, you know, perhaps not having, um, the, the right council, not having a chief compliance officer, and then, you know, COVID and the emergency broadband program just all kind of came together, and it, it just didn't seem like it was worth the, the, the investment, or we didn't have the resources to invest at the time.
Okay.
Mr. Examiner, could I make one point of clarification?
Sure.
Um, you referenced case member nineteen three seven three, uh, and that's a typo at page twenty-seven, line two. It should be nineteen zero zero three seven nine, and that's,
Yes.
That's reflected elsewhere in, in her testimony, including the next question on that page in the footnote.
Yeah, and that was one, actually, as long as, um, I can just talk to you, Mr. Herman, that was one question I had just about that footnote. There's a reference to a recommended decision. Um, I think that is probably meant to be in, a reference to an order recommending dismissal of the proceeding? Is that correct?
Final order wasn't filed until just a couple of weeks ago on eight twenty-one, looking at the docket right now. Um, that, that recommended decision was issued, oh.
Well, not to interrupt you, Mr. Herman, but the point that I was making was there really wasn't technically an RD, a recommended decision. There was an order recommending dismissal. I'm sure I have that correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Um, one other quick question, and I think this is the last question I have for you, Ms. Perry, based on your direct. Um, you talked a little bit about, on page twenty-six, um, you're asked this question, which is one of the standards for ETC designation, um, about whether you're willing and able to offer service within a reasonable timeframe. Um, and you said you can typically provide service within thirty days. Um, would that include the totality of the service area? That you expect to be able to provide service throughout the service area roughly within thirty days? Is that fair?
Yes, that's correct, and the, the reason it's thirty days is we require, we're required to receive a SAC, a service area code from USAC, and it typically takes them about thirty days to get that to us, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me ask you then, I think we've touched on much of what I had for you in your rebuttal. Um, one, one question and maybe some follow-up, uh, that I don't think I've talked about. Um, it, can you turn, turn to page five of your rebuttal testimony?
Sure.
Um, you're asked this question with respect to zip codes in tribal areas. Is staff's recommendation practical? And if you have to take a minute to re-familiarize yourself, that's fine. My, my question essentially, I was a little confused with how this was written. Can you tell me what recommendation you're referring to there, and how that recommendation is not practical?
Um, Keith, can you clarify what it was that staff's recommendation was? I'm not seeing that on here.
Um, staff's recommendation to exclude tribal areas from the statewide certificate.
Oh, so no, it's not practical. We are fully capable of providing service in tribal areas with the exception of the Mescalero Apache, um, request to remove the one zip code, so if their recommendation is that we do not provide service in tribal areas, then no, I do not believe that that's practical because we are fully capable of doing so.
Okay, all right, that may require, I may need to follow up with staff then, because I guess I had interpreted it as, um, as staff saying that not necessarily to exclude zip codes, but to say that essentially True Connect would only be permitted to offer non-tribal lifeline, but I can follow up with staff and just get that clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I believe that's all the questions that I have for you, Ms. Perry. Thank you for your testimony. I appreciate it. Hearing examiner Barrett, any questions for Ms. Perry?
Um, I just have a couple of very quick ones. Um, you covered, uh, much of what I was going to ask about, and actually, both of my questions are just clarifications, and they are referencing the petition, um, which was your Exhibit One, as opposed to your, um, testimony. So my first is just on page, uh, fifteen of the petition, subsection D. Um, True Connect states, uh, True Connect has not been subject to any ETC revocation proceedings. And I just wanted you to, um, verify that that has not changed since the petition has been filed, that True Connect still is not subject to any TC, ETC revocation proceedings. Um, uh, can you just let me, uh, have any come up since the petition was filed?
No, that's still a correct statement.
Okay, and then my second, um, question is referencing page four of the petition. This is more just to satisfy my own curiosity. Um, company lists, uh, the paragraph on the bottom of the page, service offerings. Um, it gives an enumerated list, and then at the end, it says, True Connect may provide user-friendly handsets or hotspot devices. And I was just curious, under what circumstances would True Connect, what would qualify a customer, um, for that additional service from True Connect?
Well, that's part of our tribal offering. Uh, we do provide a handset or a hotspot at no charge to the consumer on tribal, um, for tribal consumers. For standard lifeline, we, we don't. We do offer discounted, um, devices and hotspots.
And that would be something that the customer would need to indicate that they didn't have access to otherwise?
Um, sure, so in the enrollment process, uh, whether they're online or in front of a, an enrollment representative, they're asked if they would like, um, to purchase a device. If it will, if they're just a regular lifeline customer, they're asked if they would like to, if they have a device that they want to just use a SIM for, or if they would like to purchase a discounted device. And just depending on what the inventory is at the time, our system will, um, display what's available and the different prices.
Okay, um, and I think that's it. Those are the only additional questions I had for you, Ms. Perry. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Hearing examiner Barrett, your question sort of prompted, uh, reminded me of one thing I should have asked about. Um, Ms. Perry, I just have one last sort of question for you. Um, can you briefly touch on, um, so you updated your, uh, the exhibit DP ten, which is, um, the list of essentially the designations, the cases where you've been designated as an ETC in other states. Um, and so you added now Idaho, Kansas, and Ohio. Um, and then you, this decision out of Pennsylvania. Um, my read of that, because I believe that Mr. Herman had attached that particular decision to one of his filings, uh, recently. Um, my read of that decision out of Pennsylvania was that the concern was essentially that there was too much overlap between Sage Telecom, um, essentially concurrent, I guess, designation of two companies doing business as the same name. Do you wanna, uh, is that reading correct? Is that how you read it, and is there anything you want to say about that particular Pennsylvania decision?
Sure. Yes, um, I, that is my take of it as well, and it was very surprising. We've, um, had that, uh, request for designation and for over eighteen months. Um, we had no response from staff in that state for probably seven of those eighteen months, um, because somebody retired, and so it was just kind of lingering around. Um, I believe it was in June, I met with, uh, PUC for Pennsylvania, because they had the questions about the differences in the two companies. And that's common. I, I think we've, we've gone through this process in about thirty-seven states, and so typically what happens is I get on the phone or get, um, in it to a meeting with the PUC, and I explain the ownership, the structure, what happened with previous council in filing ETC designations, and what our goal is. So I did the same, and that's always satisfied everybody, um, all the other states. So I did the same with Pennsylvania. It was a great call. They were happy, no questions. And, um, they said we could expect, you know, the order late July, maybe early August. So as we approached mid-August, we started following up to see, you know, what the status was, as we hadn't heard anything or seen anything, um, in the docket. And we're shocked to get the denial, so we are filing a reconsideration, and will continue to work with the state of Pennsylvania to rectify the situation. I honestly think it's just a misunderstanding. I think they've had some I honestly think it's just a misunderstanding. I think they've had some staff, maybe some staff turnover, perhaps, um, and maybe the, just miscommunication, misunderstanding would be my thought.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, it occurred to me that I had not asked you about that, and I had meant to. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Hearing Examiner Barrett, did that prompt any remaining questions for you?
Uh, no, it did not.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Mr. Herman, any questions on redirect?
Uh, yes, a couple. Thank you. Uh, thank you for your testimony, Ms. Perry. Um, I just had a couple of things I wanted to follow up on. Um, you had mentioned that True Connect was providing ACP services, I believe you said, in New Mexico, uh, back in, oh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Can, can you say what ACP is?
Sure, Affordable Connectivity Program was originally the Emergency Broadband Program, or EBB, that was launched in, uh, twenty twenty-one. And that was a temporary program that then was, um, turned into a permanent program in the Jobs and Infrastructure Act. And, um, the Affordable Connectivity Program was the name of the program. It ran out of funding about eighteen months ago.
Um, okay, thank you for that clarification. True Connect is a national character, correct?
That is correct.
So if a True Connect customer from California were in New Mexico, um, their phone would work, correct?
That's correct.
If.
Yes, that's correct. Sorry.
I, if someone from California were moving to New Mexico and they were receiving lifeline benefits and True Connect was not certified, um, in New Mexico, would they lose their benefits?
They would.
And that's not just California, but anywhere. True Connect has ETC designation.
That's correct.
Going back to some of the distinction between Sage, uh, and True Connect, um, could you tell us a little bit about True Connect's efforts to get, uh, True Connect certified as ETC status in all fifty states?
Sure, so that was the project I, uh, referred to earlier that I've been working on for approximately eighteen months now. And I'm happy to say we have about thirty-seven states where we've been successful and, um, where we had Sage designation, where we've been successful in transitioning to True Connect, getting True Connect designation in those states. Pennsylvania is the only state that we've, um, not been approved in. Um, in Idaho, they had similar questions and concerns, uh, that, that Pennsylvania had, and we were in abeyance for a little bit, but we were approved ultimately in that state as well.
That, that was gonna be my next question. Could you tell us a little bit more about the, the Idaho process?
Sure, they had, uh, they had similar questions, um, and concerns. I think there are a handful of states that had the exact same questions and concerns. And with Idaho, um, they were just, they, they wanted to establish a timeline in which we would only be operating as one company. So once we have all of these states approved, um, for True Connect, the next step of this project, it then is to go back to the FCC and ask them how we transition the subscribers that are on the Sage SAC in these states to the True Connect SAC. Um, this project, when it started, um, came from a meeting with the FCC explaining the situation and asking for guidance on how to proceed. And they, uh, recommended that I go get the designation for True Connect in all of these states, and then come back to meet with them to talk about the transition plan. So that will be the next step to the process. Um, when explaining that to Idaho, they wanted more of a, you know, this will be done by X day, so we're not indefinitely operating as two different companies in the state. And so we agreed to terms that we would either, um, we, we would have it accomplished within the next year. And I, I don't remember the exact terms, but it was something like, um, we would either have everybody transitioned off of the Sage, um, SAC onto the True Connect SAC. We would sell the Sage designation, or we would give up the True Connect designation. But the end result is that within a year, there will just be one company designated in the state of Idaho, which would be our goal anyway.
And without going into too much detail on any one state, would you say it's difficult navigating fifty states, couple of US territories in Puerto Rico and the US Virgin Islands, and, and the FCC on top of that?
It can be a little challenging, but I'm always up for a challenge.
Uh, w- would you say all fifty states are uniform?
No, good grief, no. Definitely not. It's, um, it's been a learning experience. There are states we applied for designation and that, uh, approved within thirty days. They issued an order of approval, um, never traded an email, never had a phone call. And then there are other states, like the great state of New Mexico, where we have this process where there's a lot of questions and, uh, a lot of due diligence, which is appreciated. So it, it varies across the country.
Thank you. That was all I had on redirect.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Um, any final questions for Ms. Perry? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for your testimony. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Herman, I believe that concludes your case, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lang, that brings us to you. Um, staff can call its first and only witness.
Thank you. Uh, staff calls Brady Tolson.
Okay, Ms. Gonsalves, if, when you're ready, if you could swear in, Mr. Tolson.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give? It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so thank you, God.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonsalves. Go ahead, Ms. Lang.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, Mr. Tolson. Uh, could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, good morning. My name is Brady Tolson.
And how are you employed?
I am an economist with the Telecom Bureau of the New Mexico PRC Utility Division.
Thank you. And as part of your duties, did you review the application in the present matter?
I did.
And, um, did you prepare, uh, testimony for this proceeding?
Yes, I did.
Um, I'm gonna direct you to what has been labeled as staff's exhibit number one. Um, do you have that with you?
I do, yes.
And what is that?
That is staff's direct testimony.
And, uh, staff being you?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Um, and, uh, just to clarify, so this exhibit is your sworn testimony at the matter, correct?
Correct.
Um, was this testimony prepared by you?
Yes.
And if I ask you the same questions today, would your answers be the same?
Yes.
Um, are the answers true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Um. Staff moves to admit what has been labeled staff's, staff's exhibit number one into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Mr. Herman, any objections?
Uh, Mr. Examiner, I have one question that I might seek to clarify on cross, uh, simply why there would be two affirmations attached to this testimony, and, um, I, I believe Mr. Tolson had addressed that this is his testimony, um, what he provided. So, uh, assuming there's nothing in there that he doesn't take ownership of, uh, we wouldn't have any objection.
Uh, Mr. Tolson, you take ownership of the document. These answers are yours, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead and admit, uh, staff exhibit one. Uh.
Uh, staff passes the witness across. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Mr. Herman, do you have any questions on cross for Mr. Tolson?
Uh, a couple, thank you. Good, good morning, Mr. Tolson. How are you today?
Good, good morning, Mr. Herman. How are you?
Good, and, and we've met in the past, correct?
Yes, we have.
You're, you're located in Santa Fe or Albuquerque?
Albuquerque.
Okay. And that's where you're testifying from today?
Correct.
Uh, can you tell me what you reviewed in preparation for drafting your testimony?
Sure, um, I reviewed all of the documentation, uh, received from True Connect. So that would include, um, a couple of discovery responses, uh, testimony, a petition, and also a rebuttal testimony. Um, and then I also, of course, studied previous lifeline cases as well.
Uh, l- let me clarify. I was, I was asking about when you drafted your, uh, direct testimony, not, uh, you, you wouldn't have rebuttal to review.
Oh, I got you. For my direct testimony, uh, yes, let me clarify. For my direct testimony, um, yes, I was, um, reviewing the direct testimony of Danielle Perry, and as well as the ETC petition for True Connect.
Uh, did you also review the recommended decision in, um, twenty-four, two, four, four? I'll, I'll refer to that as the track phone case?
Uh, yes, among others.
And what did you review in preparation for your testimony today?
Um, in review of my testimony, I, um, basically reviewed my previous testimonies, uh, previous staff testimonies in these lifeline-only cases, and, um, all of the documentation that I received from True Connect.
Uh, did you, uh, re-review the recommended decision in the track phone case?
Yes, I did.
Can I just jump in really quickly, Mr. Herman? Ms. Gonsalves, just for the benefit of the record, track phone is T R A C, capital F O N E. Just for the record. Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Thank you. Do you recall the, um, recommendations contained in the track phone case?
Uh, no, not off the top of my head, no.
Okay, then, do you happen to have what's been labeled True Connect Exhibit Four in front of you?
Uh, yeah, I can open it up right now. And just one moment. Okay, it's open.
And could you identify that that is the recommended decision in the track phone case?
Yes, it is.
Uh, Mr. Examiner, I'm not going to move to admit this unless you think it's necessary, but otherwise, I think the commission is capable of, uh, referencing its own records. I just wanted it here to reflect Mr. Tolson's memory.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. We are of one mind on that. Yes, you not need to seek admission. Um, I appreciate that.
Uh, can you go to, uh, it's PDF page twenty-seven or page twenty-two, which is the conclusion?
Me too. And you're talking about, um, the same document?
Yes.
Sure, let me go down to page twenty-two. One moment, at twenty-two, and I'm sorry, which paragraph?
Uh, the section four.
Yes, I am here.
So, uh, the track phone recommended decision, uh, recommended three things, uh, compliance with the applicable federal tribal and state law, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And it also required, um, more specific maps for the Navajo Nation.
I'm sorry, more specific?
Maps for the Navajo Nation.
Yes, I see that.
And it all, it required, uh, track phone to meet with, uh, the NNTRC, which I believe is the Navajo Nation. Oh, this is testing my memory.
Telecommunications Regulatory Commission.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Telecommunications Regulatory Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Examiner. So with respect to all these recommendations, uh, the recommended decision wasn't conditional. Um, it, ETC status was granted with the caveat, or, uh, excuse me, the recommended decision recommended, uh, that ETC status be granted, but also required these additional terms, correct?
Correct.
Now, in your testimony, however, you want it conditional on some, some additional outreach. Uh, are you basing that on any provision of the New Mexico Administrative Code or statutes?
Yes, I am. That would be seventeen eleven ten twenty-four, section A, part four, public interest. Uh, staff has an obligation to work in the public interest, and uh, tribal outreach in New Mexico is one of the most important aspects of public interest.
But what in that statute would make the, uh, authority conditional? Or would, would require a further proceeding before providing service?
I'm not an attorney, but in previous cases, um, this is not uncommon. Um, you could see our previous lifeline cases. I can give, and I can reference a couple for you if you'd like.
Um, if, if you know off the top of your head, please do.
Sure, uh, Boomerang is thirteen dash zero zero two one five. And Q-Link would be twelve dash zero zero three eight nine. And to provide you with some context, um, staff hasn't had really any lifeline-only applications in about a decade up until recently. Um, so those are gonna be your most relevant cases to study, and, um, in both of those cases, similar, uh, conditions were recommended.
Do you know if they were adopted?
No, I don't.
Do you disagree with, uh, the contention that, um, tribal communities are generally underserved and difficult to bring service to?
Yes, they're very underserved.
And you also mentioned that staff, uh, and, and generally the universal service goals is to give service to as many people as possible, correct?
Correct.
So do you think it helps effectuate those purposes by putting additional barriers to enter the market on, uh, an applicant?
Uh, staff doesn't believe that we are doing that. Uh, staff believes that we're, we're looking and, and working in the public interest. Um, and that's a very important to us here in New Mexico, especially that we have a sovereign nation contained within our state. Um, it's very important to us.
But you're requiring additional efforts to be taken before True Connect can even provide service, correct?
No, that is not correct. It's a recommendation. Um, uh, again, I am not the commission or the hearing examiners. This is simply a staff's recommendation, uh, which follows suit with previous staff recommendations.
And that recommendation is to require additional outreach prior to providing service?
Yes, if you wanna review, uh, Boomerang would be a good one. Mark Sesserich, um, that was a common recommendation of his.
I'm sorry, Boomer, I'm sorry, Boomerang, I lost you.
Boomerang is case thirteen dash zero zero two one five. The witness was Mark Sesserich. And he provided the same, same recommendation. What's that?
Can you spell that by any chance? Sesserich?
Yeah, oh, um, yeah, actually, I could. I'll just open it up for you so I can, I don't wanna give it to you wrong. Um, just one moment. I have it right here, if you don't mind. Okay, C, um, Sesserich, C as in cat, E as in eat, S as in Sam, S as in Sam, A as in apple, R as in rich, I as in ice, C as in cat, and H as in hat.
Thank you.
Your one.
Um, I, I wanna go back to something you mentioned about, uh, tribes being sovereign nations. Do you recall that testimony?
Yes.
So with respect to, um, the track phone recommend, or recommended decision requiring a meeting with the NNTRC. Does the commission have any authority to make the NNTRC take any message? Or take any meeting?
Uh, do not, no answer to that.
And you said you based the, this specific recommendation to, to limit service to tribal communities based on the Boomerang and the Q-Link cases, correct?
Yes, but I wanna clarify. Yes, but I want to clarify, it's I don't want to limit. Um, I very much, the staff very much. Wants true connect as a lifeline provider. I want that to be very clear. This, we're not denying, we are simply asking for a few extra uh conditions. And that's up to the the hearing examiners and the commission.
Um. But but back to my question, it was based on those two cases, maybe some other cases. Was it ever based on any discussion? You had with the P R C Tribal Advisory Committee?
No.
Have you ever met with the Tribal Advisory Committee?
I'm sorry, tribal tribal advisory who?
Committee, I have, I have committee, it might be council, but I'm referring to um. The governor's appointed tribal advisory committee um to to advise the commission on tribal matters. Are you familiar with that?
I am familiar with it, yes.
Have you ever advised him on any telecom matters? Uh, could could you answer that for the court reporter out loud?
I said no.
Thank you. I I didn't catch that.
No problem.
Are are you aware of anyone at Telecom Staff meeting with the Tribal Advisory Committee?
Um, almost certainly, but you uh to give some context, um, the life, uh, our staff, um. Most recent retiree was here for twenty five years. And then um there's another person on staff who's been here also over a decade, so. Um, I would assume so. I've only been here for about four years. And um during that time, I I would have to say no, not not from my under understanding.
You're not aware of anyone at Telecom Staff for your tenure?
I I believe that I'm sure they have, but um people have retired and moved on, so I can't say.
Do you have any idea of what sort of specific? Outreach would be sufficient to satisfy your recommendation?
Oh, yeah, I I could definitely provide um examples or help, or if True Connect would like, I could um. Uh, offer advice and documentation, anything you'd like. Um, but in previous applications that things that I've seen that I liked were. Um, for example, meetings held on tribal land, informational meetings, um, radio advertisements. Have been really good. And then the number one thing is just ongoing communication. Like an an open channel um of back and forth communication. That is the most important.
So how do you have ongoing communication if a company isn't authorized to provide service to a territory?
Um, I I don't believe any companies have had issues with this before.
Fun saying if if your recommendation is to not grant true connect uh tribal E T C status.
That's not my recommendation. My recommendation is to grant E T C designation.
Oh.
Uh, with conditions.
Okay, so so let me clarify, you're. You you're saying you would like to see some additional outreach, but you would also um. Agree that true connect should be authorized to serve tribal communities?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then that gets us to a good place. Um, I wanted to. Refer you briefly to answer some of the hearings and those questions. Uh, to Daniel Perry's direct testimony. Um, exhibit D P five.
Just one moment and I'll open that up. Okay. And D P five, that's going to be at the end, I'm assuming.
If you have.
Okay, yes, service territory.
Yes, specifically the zip codes. Um, and I think this was what she was trying to get at in her rebuttal testimony is. Do you know how many instances or? Do you know if zip codes in New Mexico um correspond directly with tribal areas?
No, you know, I'm not completely sure because I know in previous cases we've had issues with that. Um, I don't think that it's perfectly aligned, though.
Yeah, I think when I did a spot check of the Pueblo House eight seven five seven one. That that encompassed um a lot of the surrounding areas. Would you disagree with that?
No.
So a- and I I think we already got to this when when you said you recommended a conditional approval of. Providing service in all in all uh territories, but um I. Your understanding is that zip codes don't correspond directly with tribal service territories?
Yeah, no, they don't. It's it's complicated.
And are are you familiar with the tribal verification process for E T C benefits?
Um, just from, yeah, the what the U S A P has provided, yeah.
And and that involves in i- in in very brief terms, an individual uh customer verifying that they need certain eligibility. Criteria?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, thank you. That's that's all I had.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman, uh, and uh, thank you, Mr. Tolleson. Um. Hearing Examiner Barrett, I am inclined to just take a quick uh ten minute recess, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I think this would be a good time for that.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead, uh, unless anybody has any major concerns, Ms. Galtman's, Ms. Gonzalez, we'll go ahead and go off the record just for ten minutes. Um, and then we'll come back at about ten after.
And just so the parties um realize that when we go on break, the YouTube uh live stream does continue, so um. Just be cautious about what you say.
Okay, we'll be back in ten.
We're not quite ready to go back on the record just yet. I gave everybody ten minutes, so it's it's only been eight. So we'll wait till everybody's back. Okay, it's probably close enough. Ms. Lang, Mr. Herman, you guys ready to go ahead and get back started? I see that we have Mr. Tolson with us.
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Ms. Consolts, whenever you're ready, we'll go ahead and go back on the record. Okay, I think we're back on the record. Time is now eleven ten AM. We just finished with Mr. Herman's cross-examination. And that brings us now to the hearing examiners. And I will go ahead and go first. Mr. Tolson, good morning to you, sir. I have a few questions for you.
Okay, good morning.
Um, let me start. I have sort of an array of different questions for you, again largely clarification and and some just for the benefit of my own knowledge, but let me just pick up, I think. Where I think Mr. Herman left off, or at least I think one of the main sort of thrusts of his. Of his cross. I just want to get a clear understanding of the recommendation that you have.
Oh, sure.
This was sort of a discussion point with Ms. Perry. And again, it came up on cross with Mr. Herman, so let me just. Let me just direct you to your testimony. So staff exhibit one. That very last page, page twenty-eight. Um, and I'm just gonna read to you quickly what. You write you write here, and then I I want you to sort of clarify. What it is that you're recommending that that hearing examiner Barrett and I do. So you say staff further observes the true connect has not undertaken any outreach to tribal governments in New Mexico. Regarding the provision of service on tribal lands. Nor has true connect provided any specific advertising or having points of presence in tribal areas. It is staff's recommendation that true connect be granted an ETC lifeline designation. That excludes authorization to provide service to tribal pueblo or the Navajo Nation. Once true connect has provided specific outreach and advertising plans for relevant tribal areas within New Mexico. Staff discerns that true connects application will be better suited for a recommendation. To grant a full and unconditional ETC lifeline designation. And I think so there's just from what I've heard, that was sort of interpreted by different people to mean different things. So my read of it. Uh, was that you were essentially saying. You weren't cutting out zip codes from the proposed service area as much as you were saying they shouldn't be granted authorization to provide travel lifeline. That was my interpretation until today. It sounds like um true connects interpretation was that you were saying essentially exclude the tribal. Zip codes. But today. What I understood you say to Mr. Herman was essentially the recommendation is, I guess, to grant. Uh, permission to offer tribal lifeline in the designated service area with certain conditions. Is is that correct?
That is correct. That is um, that is you. You're right. That is, I should have clarified that. Um. That is correct. Uh, I see the confusion though, and and I understand it. I'll I'll do better moving forward. Thank you.
Well, I'm not trying to, I really truly, I'm not trying to nitpick the the verbiage of your your testimony as much as I just want to. You know, sort of what it is.
Yes. Yes, my 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 clarification is that I I am recommending ETC designation. Including like tribal lands um with these conditions.
Okay, and those conditions are. Um, if I read this right. Specific outreach. And advertising plans for those tribal areas in New Mexico.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So we got that, I think.
Can I can I actually ask for?
Please.
Further clarification on that? So. Is the condition that the company makes a commitment to provide? This further outreach if they are approved or that the condition is that they. Provide the commission with some sort of evidence that they have already provided this before. A final order is issued allowing them tribal designation.
Good question. Um, and this is kind of going off the way I understand reading these recommended decisions, but the way I I've read these in the past. It seems that the commission wants some uh wants basically within thirty days. The the petitioner to come back with that plan. So within thirty days, they say, okay, this is what we're gonna do. Um, this is what we've decided how we're gonna. Tackle this outreach. Basically, um, so. What they've asked for in the past is after thirty days, that company would submit their their plan on how they intend to complete what we've requested.
Within thirty days of of which action?
Of the the um recommended decision, I believe. Um, but that's just my understanding of the reading of it. I'm not completely sure how it works.
And you may not know this offhand, but do you know which cases um? That. Uh, comes from?
Yes, that would be Boomerang. Um, that's the one that is thirteen zero zero two one five.
Okay, and my understanding from that case, just to clarify on the record, and again. Similar to hearing examiner crying cap, I'm not, I'm just trying to get clarification. I'm not trying to nitpick, but. My understanding in the Boomerang case was there was never a final order that that petition was in fact dismissed, so that. That um process was never um followed through to its conclusion. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I think it lasted. Quite a long time. Um, that one as well as Q link. Um, these cases have. Typically been um pretty contentious, just because it it when it comes down to that tribal aspect. Um, it has. It has caused issues in the past. It's because it's something that we're we are. Persistent about. We do want this. Um, and staff has always requested this and. Um, it's, you know, it's just part of the process here in New Mexico.
Hearing examiner crying camp. I'm sorry to jump in, but please go ahead.
No, that was. I gave me an opportunity to to. I guess process this. So. It would be the the you you would request a condition that essentially would say that. Within thirty days of. The commission's ruling on this that then uh true connect would file specific outreach and advertising plans. That would be the idea?
Yeah, or some kind of commitment. Yeah, just something like that.
Okay, all right. Okay.
And then if um these I can I can share with you also post. Post-hearing um some of the other there's in the in those older cases, they asked for a lot of conditions. Um, staff has narrowed it down here. Um, to just, we're really focusing on outreach, but there if um to give you a better idea of what these conditions have looked like in the past, in those cases, I I can definitely do that at a later time.
Okay, well. We can talk to, um, I guess the attorneys about that. Let me ask you some other questions. Uh, so. One of the other questions that I had um related to this, and Mr. Herman asked you this um on cross. Was these conditions essentially where they fit into the commission's standards, essentially where. You know what we're sort of shoehorning these in, and you said. The public interest, which I think makes sense. Um, and so a- as I understand that your concern is that in the absence of this type of information. Essentially, they would not have established that granting tribal lifeline, permission to offer tribal lifeline is in the public interest. That's what you're saying.
Yes, and um the word you use information is key there because the way staff views it is. There's an information disconnect. There's a market failure. That is why the lifeline subsidy exists. Regular business incentives have failed. Meaning that regular business business incentives have not brought service to all people that need it. Um, because of an information failure. So. Information is very important that everyone who is eligible for lifeline knows about lifeline.
Let me ask you about information, because that was one of the one of the other questions that I had. If you turn to page uh four. Um, of your testimony. One of the questions that I had. While we're talking about sort of information um being provided. Um, you make this statement on lines four through six. You said staff notes, however, that this determination was reached only after. Both initial and supplemental discovery were required to address deficiencies in the original record. Um, that confused me primarily, I think, because of the word record. Um, and this is probably me being overly technical and um violating my own. You know, uh. Guiding principle of not trying to nitpick, but can you clarify what deficiencies you were talking about? Because when you say record, that tells me. The record of this proceeding, and that tells me then where my brain goes as an attorney is there's a deficiency in the actual record. So can you tell me a little bit about what deficiencies you're talking about there?
Sure, to clarify there, I was just referring to the most recent true connect financials, the their most recent financials. Um, we were able to obtain those through discovery and and that that's um something I was missing at the time. To complete my review of the application, so that that's why I worded it that way, but.
Okay.
But um it is, yeah, we now have that information.
So what you were referring to was you didn't have access to all of the information that staff likes to review before it makes a recommendation.
Correct.
Okay, you're not arguing that the application was deficient in some way?
No.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. Um. One of the other subjects that's come up. Before is um the exclusion of the Mescalero Apache Reservation uh from the. So the proposed service for is, as I understand it, would be the totality of the state except for the Mescalero Apache Reservation. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it as well, yes.
Okay. One of the questions that I imagine that the commission has with these cases, this is not the first time. Um, that the Mescalero Apache Reservation has been sort of excluded. Um, can you tell me why um that ends up happening in these cases? Um, to your knowledge?
Sure, um, from my experience, um, their Mescalero is pretty quick to reach out in these cases. Um. They really like their independence and they try to. Do everything from within. For example, they have their own broadband company, um, things like that. So. That 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 is from my understanding, that's the primary reason why they're a little um. Uh suspicious of of some of some companies coming in and they they respect their their own um companies, you know, they they kind of do everything themselves.
Okay.
And it seems it seems they like to keep it that way.
Okay. You know, and one of the other questions that I I had, um, you have referred several times today in your testimony to. There sort of being a big gap in um the filing of these new ETC cases that essentially.
Yeah.
Used to be a bunch of them, and then there was a big gap, and now we're seeing more of them. Um, is that just a case by case basis and the luck of the draw or what what is? Um, or is it a change in federal law? What is the reason that the commission is starting to see more of these cases?
From from staff's perspective, um, I started getting a lot of phone calls about this. Um, I would say, uh, when. It was announced that ACP would be ending the Affordable Care Program. Um, Ms. Perry referenced that in um earlier in testimony. And that's another reason we we want them, uh, we staff. Wants ETC designation for them is because it would be very helpful for the state of Mexico because. Some of those ACP provider or people that were on the ACP plan. Um, now they're just kind of left stranded and so a lot of those companies that were providing ACP have reached out and say, okay, we're coming in now. We're gonna try to. Get ETCs. So um, that started in about the the last year or so, we started, um, they started to stack up. Um, so they're just now coming in.
So then let me ask you, um, and this I think goes to what Ms. Perry was talking about in terms of um sort of a a real gap um on tribal lands. Tell me. Was the ACP program um was that helpful um in providing access to? These types of telecommunications services on tribal lands in particular? Tell me, tell me a little bit about that.
Uh, from staff's process, but from staff's perspective, I we'd have to say it was definitely beneficial because if you look at. How many people have been left stranded, it seems like um since it has been gone. Um, that's a big thing. A lot of these companies tell me when they they come in is we have all these people that were on ACP and. You know, and now they don't have anything, so we need, we want to try to provide lifelines so they can get, you know, have some service, so. It was definitely helping, but there's still some disconnect out there where a lot of people um that that are eligible don't know about.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Um, let me ask you about one of the questions that I talked to Ms. Perry about. Um, and that was um sort of true connects competitiveness. Um, in terms of their offerings. Um, I, one of the questions that I asked her was um essentially to compare. Her or not her offerings, but true connect, true connects offerings. As far as unlimited talk, talk and text, uh, their data package to the competitors, um, their potential competitors. Um, I'd like you to answer that same question if you could.
Sure, um, I would say it's about. The same off the top of my head. Um, for, for example, assurance wireless SBI. They do, they provide um service on tribal land. They also have unlimited call, unlimited text and ten gigabits of data. So I would say comparable, very similar. Um, I would say, though, that um one thing that differentiates true connect is they do have their own customer service. Um, which staff views as 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 a unique feature and very beneficial.
Yeah, let me pick up on that thread because I think you're referring to um that would be on page nineteen of your. Your testimony. Um, you talked about one of the most notable advantages, this is. Your testimony. One of the most notable advantages from staff's perspective is that true connect operates its own call center. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? What what do its competitors do if they don't have their own call?
Sure, yes. Yeah, so this was this was something that staff appreciated because um it's something. Uh, we just don't see often in general in business anymore is just a um. Call centers overseas is typically what a lot of these um value segmented brands do. They. They just have um overseas call centers and, you know, sometimes there can be communication barriers or 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 numerous. Communication barriers. Um, but sometimes those uh. They don't really help the customer if the customer doesn't feel like. You know, they're not associated with that brand. Whereas true connect, their customer service is, okay, it's us answering the phone. We can help you with this product, if that makes sense.
Uh huh.
There's there's no, there's not that disconnect.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let me then, I think pivot. Back to. The issue of tribal lands um a little bit. Um, so there was some dispute. In your direct and then in um Ms. Perry's rebuttal um about sort of true connects experience out of state. Um, and you made a statement, I'm gonna direct you to page twenty-one of your testimony. Um, that I thought was interesting. You said um. It should be noted that tribal lands in New Mexico operate differently from those in other states. In New Mexico, tribal lands are largely independent and often exercise significant control over which companies are permitted to provide services. Um, and that sort of made me wonder, so um are you are you suggesting there that tribal lands operate differently and? I guess it would be Oklahoma, Washington, and then Alaska, and if that's the case, how how do you think that they operate in those states?
Sure, um, I won't get into it too deeply because my knowledge of it isn't too deep, but I will say that um from my knowledge that New, from staff's knowledge, New Mexico is. A little different than for for say Oklahoma. Um, in Oklahoma, from what I understand. Resident tribal lands are a little different as far as who can do what on tribal lands. Um, but that's as far as my understanding goes. If if you want more information on that, though, staff would be glad to do some kind of analysis.
Okay, just a couple of um other clarification questions. So. One question, uh, if you go to page twenty-five. Of your testimony, and I I I think that this is probably another instance of. Sort of there being a gap in communication, but uh you you say here. True Connect is not committed to tribal outreach at this time. Um, and expressed in their supplemental discovery, they will do so once ETC designation is granted. Um, so again, what what is it that you are looking for in terms of tribal outreach?
Um, so basically what Steph wants to see is that. At least the company has met with Navajo Nation at the very least. Um, held held informational sessions about their services. Um, and have some kind of New Mexico-specific advertisements. At the very least.
Can I ask for a further clarification on that? When you say that one of the um. Conditions that you're looking for is that the company would meet with. Navajo, um. I guess, I guess that. And this goes to one of my bigger questions is, you know, what part of outreach? Uh, I guess maybe how asking you to clarify what part of outreach? Um, does staff consider to be direct marketing or advertisements to potential customers as opposed to? Outreach to um tribal representatives or tribal government because my understanding. From Ms. Perry's rebuttal testimony, which I know you didn't have at the time you were doing your direct, is that? True Connect. Did reach out, it looks like, to legal counsel for the Navajo Nation and didn't get a response. So, um. So I guess my question is. Do you feel as though at this point? Uh, true connect has satisfied staff's um. Hopes for how they would reach out to sort of representatives um uh. And it's it the year, now you're just looking more for advertisement? If that makes sense?
Um, somewhat, yeah, the we are looking for specific New Mexico advertisement. And we do acknowledge that they have reached out to tribal commissions. But also they've acknowledged they haven't heard back. Um, so the thing is. Some kind of open channel of communication would be key, just like we have an open channel with true connect to help assist them. Um, through this process, it's it would be helpful for Navajo Nation to be involved. It's a very big part of our state.
And then I guess the second part of that question being what kind of direct marketing or advertisements to potential customers um. Does staff consider to be? Reasonable in this situation as opposed to going through representatives for the? For the trap.
Sure, um, I've provided a few examples, just like radio ads, TV ads. And seminars on Navajo lands. Um, some other companies also have agents that they send periodically. Um, door to door or just however, so things like that. Um, but like I said, also, this is, it's usually the. Commission that decides um what kind of out that at least in these cases that I referenced earlier. Um, the commission kind of decided what outreach would be appropriate. Um, this was something they were very big on, so um. It, you know, I can't really speak to what what they might want, but what staff would like to see, um, I can definitely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was helpful. Uh. Mr. Tolson, let me pick up on that. So one of the um. One of the requirements for ETC designation, as as I talked about a little bit with Ms. Perry. Um, is the requirement to um provide services throughout the designated service area, right? One of the other requirements is that you advertise services throughout the service area. Is that correct as well?
Yes.
And if a company were to be designated, um. You know, let's say you have a ETC that's designated statewide and essentially they just decide, you know. Um, we're not really all that interested in in offering services in, you know. That a quadrant of the state. Um, they would be subject to potential um. Revocation proceedings, at least as it would proceed to that area, right, that they're not advertising in and serving? Is that correct as well?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, so it seems to me that if they are granted ETC designation, they would have a legal obligation. To provide and advertise services. Navajo Nation, all of the tribal areas that they would be designated in.
Yes, and they have a they have a business incentive as well. The the thing is, those business incentives have traditionally failed. That's why we have this subsidized lifeline market. Um, it's an information failure. A lot of people that qualify for lifeline don't know about it. So from staff's perspective, simply checking the boxes is not enough. Um, we we want to see some real a- active engagement.
Okay, and then I have to ask, one of the um, one of the comments that you made um. Uh, in response to uh hearing examiner Barrett was um. She asked you about what you would be looking for in terms of outreach, and you said. We do acknowledge that they've reached out to tribal commissions, but also they've acknowledged that they haven't heard back. Um, and that answer sort of stood out to me a little bit there, uh, because I think that's what. I think that's what Mr. Herman is getting at when he sort of asked this question about. I think that's what Mr. Herman is getting at when he sort of asked this question about, um. I mean, Navajo Nation has no obligation to return their phone calls, right? Um, so I don't know that we can require, uh. We, I don't know that we can really require them to hear back from these tribal entities, does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay. Um, just one, I think just one last question, um, and I don't think we've talked about this very much today, but. Let me turn your attention to page twenty-seven of your direct, of your, your testimony.
True.
And I wanna ask you about, um, so, um, Ms. Perry provided some, some helpful context in terms of what that previous case was with True Connect. And I think that's what you're referring to here, um, on page twenty-seven of your testimony, um, you talked about how. Uh, there was this order from the hearing examiner, um. And the hearing examiner issued what you called a cautionary warning relevant to the current proceeding. Um, are you suggesting, and I am going to ask Mr. Herman and Ms. Lang about this, um, at the end, but. Um, are you suggesting that that would have bearing on this case, or I guess, wh- what is your, um. What if anything should the commission do with that cautionary warning?
Sure.
Bring to there.
Sure, um, yeah, I'd be glad to clarify, the link I'm trying to make there is that Steph, um. Used to work primarily with Anthony Maderos on these Lifeline only cases, he was the, the, um. He, he basically always took these cases, um, and so his, his knowledge and his recommendations are. What I have been trained on and how, how I've learned this past five years. Um, so I'm just trying to make that, that link so that you understand where staff is coming from with our recommendations. And that we're very well, but well aware of the history of Lifeline applications the past twenty years in this state, um, that's all I was trying to do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tolson, that was helpful, I don't believe I have any further questions for you, sir.
Um. Well, I actually think that you answered my questions, um, as I was asking them, uh, as Hearing Examiner Cryon Camp was, um. Questioning you, so I thank you very much, um, but I don't have any further questions for you.
Thank you, Ms. Hearing Examiner.
Ms. Lang, any questions on redirect?
Sorry, I'm having problems on unmuting myself, no, um, no, thank you, we have no redirect.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Mr. He, Mr. Herman, any last questions for Mr. Tolson?
Uh, yes, I'd like to request some brief recross.
Very brief, yes.
Okay, this is based on, uh, Mr. Tolson, these questions are based on some of your exchanges with the hearing examiners. Um. Let's see, uh. Regarding meeting with tribes in general, do you know? How many tribes there are in New Mexi- tribes in Pueblos or nations?
Off the top of my head, no, I do not.
Um. A- and. Are you generally familiar that not every indigenous community has federal recognized status?
Yes, very familiar, we're, Steph's mostly concerned with Navajo Nation as it's a very big part of our state.
Yeah, and, and there was some discussion about, uh, the Navajo Nation Tribal, uh, on the blank, the NNTRC for. Subject to check on what that actually stands for. Are, are you aware of any other tribe, pueblo or nation that has its own, let's say telecom regulatory agency or telecom office?
I'm not sure, I know that Mescalero, you know, they have their own biz- businesses, um, so I imagine they, they might. Um, but I'm not sure.
And generally. You're aware that some Pueblos have, I think Sandia has two to three hundred members, um, Navajo. As opposed as, is much larger, both in territory and population.
Correct.
So, I, I wanted to go back to, um, the discussion you had with. The hearing examiners and, and briefly myself on advertisement, um. Would you agree with a statement, um, Ms. Perry made in her rebuttal? At page eight, line seventeen, starting at line seventeen. That True Connect is incentivized to get as many subscribers as possible.
Um, I, yes, I actually acknowledged this earlier when I, um, I acknowledged that this is not a. That would pertain to a normal business market, you know, business one-on-one. We're not talking about that, that, we're talking about a subsidized market here, so a subsidized market exists due to market failures. Market failure exists due to lack of information, in this case.
But, but you'd agree that I think both the commission and True Connect are aligned that whatever outreach should be done. Should be effective.
Yes, it should be effective.
And, um. I'd just say generally, people are swamped with advertisements, uh. I, I'm, I'm sure you've seen, uh, anecdotal studies of say, oh, so many thousand advertisements a day, correct?
Sure.
So. Do you think there's a point of diminishing returns regarding number of or frequency of advertisements?
In a traditional market, yes, but we're not talking about a traditional market here, we're talking about a subsidized market.
Well, and, and with respect to ETC, correct me if I'm misunderstanding it, but. Uh, True Connect still receives payments for each customer it gets, it's just. The source of the payments that changes, correct?
Correct.
So, True Connect is still incentivized to get as many customers as possible.
It has a business incentive, correct, but traditional business incentives have failed, that is why Lifeline exists.
But, but would, would you disagree that it aligns the interest of the company with the interest of? Uh, creating knowledge of the product?
Uh, no, because if that was the case, then everyone would already be served. Um, the problem is that we have underserved people in New Mexico, we want to make sure that they are served. And in order to do that, you have to, especially in New Mexico, not just effective marketing, but very specific marketing.
And, and we talked a little bit about that obligation to serve and. And would you, would you agree with the characterization that the obligation to serve is generally any paying customer is? Uh, going to be provided service without, uh, discrimination?
Yes.
And you don't have any information in this case? That would indicate True Connect would deny anyone's service based on their. Uh, availability.
No.
Now, are you familiar with the amount of service that was required in this case?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Um, the hearing examiners required, among other things, direct mailing of the entire application. Not just, uh, in newspapers of general circulation, but directly to all twenty-one Pueblos. Uh, a few, uh, Bureau of Indian Affairs offices, the Navajo Nation, the Navajo Nation Telecom Office. Um. A, a, a num- what I'm, what I'm getting at is the commission required a number of both direct notice to the Pueblos. And tribes of the application and of the hearing itself. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
And you'd agree that that's more notice than is generally required in a traditional, let's say, utility filing?
Um, I couldn't say.
That's all right, um. Would you at least agree that? Both the commission and, uh, and True Connect are constantly trying to determine what is effective communication. Especially with underserved communities.
Um, can you clarify the question?
Objection.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Lang, what's the basis?
I think this is beyond the scope of, um, Mr. Tolson's testimony.
Mr. Herman, a response?
Mr. Examiner, uh, we were discussing, um, just the effectiveness, uh. Portion of, um, advertisement in general. And I think it was within your scope, that I wrote down specifically the word effective in mind and. And I, I'm just trying to get the basic concept that ev- everybody wants whatever notice or advertisement to be done, to be effective, but. We're ju- we're just trying to get that, uh, simple, uh, point established.
Okay, um, I will allow it, um, I understand where Ms. Lang is coming from, uh, this is recross, so this should be brief, so I would encourage you to come to your. Point sooner rather than later, I will allow it, because I did, um, in my questions, I did ask him about. Um, effectively reaching out to tribal members, so I will allow it on that, on that grounds.
I still need clarification on the question?
Um, simply put, uh, the, the, the hearing examiners are pointlessly requiring notice, they. The, the point of the notice of this application was to inform people, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused about what, what you're asking.
Ju- just that, I, I'm just trying to establish that everyone is interested in informing people of. Uh, hearing proceedings, this application, and services offered to communities.
I, I'm really not sure how to answer that question, I, I declined to answer that.
Oh, I'll move on, um, that, that finishes my recross, Mr. Examiner, and, and just one other procedural note. Um, you had asked about the Mescalero Apache Tribe, and we had provided. Um, the communication directly from the Mescalero Apache in our May sixth. Proof of service of True Connect, uh, attachment B, so. Um, as it hasn't been admitted to, uh, as an exhibit, I simply just request administrative notice of that filing.
Okay, well, I, um, I don't know that. Uh, Ms. Lang, do you have any objection to taking administrative notice to that filing?
Uh, stop just on address.
All right, yeah, I'll, we'll go ahead and take administrative notice of that, I'm not sure how essential that is, but we'll, we'll do that for the sake of the record.
Just for sake of letting the Mescaleros speak for themselves.
Sure. Uh, Ms. Lang, do you have any questions, um, following Mr. Herman's redirect or recross?
I did not, I did not, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett, or, uh, Hearing Examiner Barrett, any final questions?
I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Neither do I, thank you, Mr. Tolson, for your testimony today, sir, we do appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
And Ms. Lang, I believe that that concludes Steph's case as well.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, so that does conclude, um, if I'm not mistaken, the testimony and evidence portion of the hearing today. Um, before we address briefing, though, I did have one question that I, um, got to with Mr. Tolson, and I wanted to direct it to the attorneys. Um, and, um, I just wanted to give you a chance to address it orally, and then you can address it in briefing if you feel that it is necessary. Um, and that question relates to this previous case involving Sage Telecom. What Mr. Tolson referred to as a quote-unquote cautionary warning relevant to the current proceeding. Um, that question, I think, has sort of a factual component, I think it's more of a legal question. Um, and so essentially, the question that I wanted to give you both an opportunity to address for us is essentially, is there anything that? We as hearing examiners or the commission needs to do with that language in that order recommending dismissal in that private pre- previous case? Uh, Mr. Herman, do you want to address that first?
Thank you, Mr. Examiner, my understanding of that, let's say cautionary warning, was simply that, um. True Connect would have to provide full and frank answers to discovery propounded by staff and interveners. Um, the record in this case shows we have, uh, there was one motion to compel that wasn't granted. Um, we've, we've been forthcoming with, with, uh, addressing every inquiry, um. From both the hearing examiners and staff in this case, including, uh, supplemental bench request responses and conformance with the. Uh, Hearing Examiner's bench request order and discovery responses, so, um. I, I don't think that cautionary warning, um. Teeds any additional merit here, uh, we've demonstrated our continued commitment to providing information to staff interveners and the commission.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lang, do you have an opinion on this question?
Um, I generally agree with, uh, what Mr. Herman said, except for the motion to compel that was not granted, it was not decided upon, because while it was pending. Staff reported to the hearing examiners that the discovery was, uh, had been provided, so in a way, it was resolved rather than denied. Um, and, eh, the short version of it is, when Mr. Tolson's, um. Testimony was being drafted, there was a lot of, um. The discovery wasn't going as, as, um. Smoothly as, as these cases typically do, and I do believe that, uh, that was added in, uh, Mr. Tolson's. Um, uh, testimony just to, as he stated earlier, so to, um. I guess, give a perspective of how, where we're coming from, and this is not just this case, but we are, um. Considering or, um, to keep putting into consideration other previous cases and the recommended decisions, uh. Issued by Hearing Examiner, uh, Mederos, um, so, um, I guess in short, I, I generally agree with what Mr. Herman. Just stated, and, um, yes, I, I think to the extent that we were just, um, pointing out that, um, it would be. Helpful to, uh, the applicant's case if. Our discovery questions were, uh, handled a bit smoother, but it has been resolved, and, um. Here we are at a hearing, so I think, um, that doesn't need to be taken or given as much weight as, um. You would think, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lang, and thank you, Mr. Herman, yeah, the question was really not so much about the. Discovery in this case as much as it was about what, if anything, um, we need to do with that language in that prior order. Um, we're still looking at that, I mean, I think the answer is, is probably nothing, but, um, I did want to give you an opportunity to speak to that. Um, so while we're still on the record, let's talk about briefing, um, unless Hearing Examiner Barrett, I should have given you an opportunity to follow up on that, you have any questions or? Any follow-up on, on what we just heard from Mr. Herman and Ms. Lang?
Um, no, no, I don't have any follow-up right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, so let's talk just a little bit about briefing, start with subjects to brief, and then we'll address deadlines, um, so post-hearing briefs are your own. You can brief any issues that you'd like, um, I will say in these telecommunications cases, it is helpful. For the parties to identify what the requirements, um, that apply are. Um, and then to point in the record where the evidence is for each of those requirements, um. My view in these cases generally is that the public interest inquiry is the most important thing. Um, and so taking some time to explain how the petition fits into that inquiry, I think is, is very helpful. Um, I don't really have anything specific otherwise, other than, uh, those observations generally. Um, Hearing Examiner Barrett, are there any subjects or any specific subjects we might benefit from briefing on?
I mean, informally, um, and I think, um. Mr. Tolson, uh, already sort of alluded to this, just a clarification of, um. Uh, what specifically, um, staff is looking for conditionally about the further outreach, and again, eh. It's not official enough to put it into an order, and I assume that they probably would already address this in their briefing anyway, but just to give us a little bit more. Um, specific information on that would probably be helpful.
Yes, I agree, so Ms. Lang in particular, and then Mr. Herman will have an opportunity to respond in a response brief, but. Um, the more clear you can be in terms of what exactly it is that you're, you're asking for, what you want us to put. In that recommended decision, that would be really helpful to us, I think.
Yes, noted.
Mr. Herman, um. Any questions about that?
Uh, no, I'm, my next question would be, um, scheduling on briefing.
Yeah, um, Ms. Lang, any questions, um, about subjects brief before we get to deadlines?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, so yeah, let's talk a little bit about briefing, or the, the deadlines, um, so default deadlines, as you know. Twenty days after the filing of the transcript, um, for initial briefs, and then another thirteen days for the response briefs. Um. Are the parties comfortable with those deadlines, do you want to move them, do you wanna talk about it with one another and then come back and tell us what you wanna do? Um, I'll direct this, I guess, first to Mr. Herman.
No, the, uh, deadlines provided, uh, by rule are, um, fine with us, um. We were not going to request next. we were not going to request an expedited transcript, um, so w- we'll figure twenty days when, um, when the transcript gets uploaded to E-Docs.
Okay, and Ms. Lang, same question to you, those deadlines work for staff as well?
Yes, they do. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Well, those deadlines are fine with me, Hearing Examiner Barrett, I assume we're, we're fine, both fine with those? Okay, sounds good, see you, Nada. Um, okay, uh, any final issues that we need to address while we're on the record? Okay, seeing none, uh, well, thank you all, um, we appreciate your professionalism and participation today. Uh, with that, this hearing is adjourned, and we are off the record.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five minutes before lunch.
Yes.
Good day, everyone.